All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The date is Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. As we continue to deal with the health emergency, the board is using the WebEx teleconferencing format as part of today's meeting. So whether you're participating through the World Wide Web or through the teleconferencing part, we thank you for your participation. We also have people in chambers, so thank you for being here as well. Those online, please use the raise your hand feature and wait to be recognized for the public comment period. Those on telephone, hopefully you've made arrangements with the clerk and get you part of the unscheduled appearances. And members in the audience who filled out speakers cards will be called up in the order that they are received by the clerk. Each vote today will be verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. So after the discussion, there'll be a motion made in a second, and then we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote by district. With that, I'm going to ask the clerk now to please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Birbuda is absent. Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have four members present. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business today. So if I can ask you all to please rise as we invite Pastor Chad Fagundes forward from Coenanea Church to deliver the invocation. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Third time's a charm. Glad to be here. So Heavenly Father, we pause this morning, and we just thank you so much, God, that we have breath in our lungs today. We thank you for this new day. We thank you for the cooler weather. I pray that today you would grant wisdom and discernment to the board. We pray, Father, for the Kings County. We pray that there would be a continued favor in every area over the Kings County. I pray for everybody here that may be facing challenges in their personal life or at work. God, I pray that you would give them the answer today. I pray that there would be a turning point for them today, that they'd be filled with peace. We thank you for your goodness, and we pray that it would be continued over us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Now, join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the great love of this nation, to their God, to this whole community.
Thank you very much, everyone. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Does the clerk have a record of those wishing to address the board under unscheduled?
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Josh Cunningham.
Good morning, Chief. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Josh Cunningham, Assistant Fire Chief with Kings County. Firefighters are very happy across the state for this change in weather and rain. And this weekend, we were able to get most of our people home. Currently, Kings County only has one person left, and that's Dolly Justin Silveira, Captain Silveira. Her team is going to be transitioning out Saturday. So come this Saturday, we'll have everyone home resting, and hopefully we'll be done for the year, but we never know. So also, the department had the great honor of escorting Ms. Crystal Hernandez to Colorado Springs, Colorado this weekend for the IFF National Fallen Firefighter Memorial. Keith Hernandez passed away in 2019. We've been trying to make it to Colorado for several years, and it kept getting postponed due to the pandemic. And this is the first year they had it. So Mr. Hernandez and 468 other firefighters' names were added to the wall this weekend. So we took some pictures, and there you can see Ms. Hernandez was very happy that we escorted her and was very happy with the ceremony. It took 1,200 Honor Guard, if you can go to the next picture, throughout the nation and Canada to pull off this event. And that was just to pull the ceremony off. That wasn't anybody in the crowd with the families from the department. So they took a picture at the end, and that's all 1,200 Honor Guard that helped pull the ceremony off. It was very amazing. I want to thank you for the opportunity. And Ms. Hernandez would like to thank you for sending us to Colorado to escort her. If there's any questions, if not, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Lewis, or Katie Arntz, or Ann.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lisa Lewis from Behavioral Health. Boy, that's hard to follow. Thank you. I'm here this morning because I wanted to make you aware that many months ago, you approved a new clinical position for us so that we could support the probation department in the Secure Youth Treatment Program. And so Stephanie Beeler, who had been the Adult System of Care Manager in our department for four and a half years, and helped us to build our adult system of care and work on kind of knitting that system together and getting everybody working together, asked to move over to that new position. So she's now working over at probation, taking a lot of her know-how in building a program over there and her historical knowledge of our system. So we're really thrilled that Stephanie is over there. But then that opened up a position of a clinical manager over our adult system of care, which is crucial to us. So we went out for recruitment and are very pleased to introduce you to our new manager today. And I'm going to ask Katie to go ahead and introduce him to you.
Good morning, Chairman Nevs, Board of Supervisors. A couple of weeks ago, we brought to your board a request for an advanced step higher for a candidate who has 20 years of experience working in the field of mental health and over 15 with his most recent employer. Most recently, he oversaw three clinics in Tulare County, and I'm just really pleased to introduce you to him. He started yesterday and came back today. His name is Polo Ortiz. And I did not ask him to prepare a few words, but Polo, anything you'd like to share? Happy second day.
Good morning, board members. Just happy to be here. I have experience in Kings County now. I worked in Fresno, in Tulare County. And, you know, for me, it's just the opportunity to help serve the community. The reason I'm in Kings County is because my family is here, and that's with my wife. And so I'm happy to be here in Kings County.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lance Lippincott.
Morning, Lance.
Mr. Chairman and supervisors, I just wanted to come before you today to make a shameless plug for the Kings County Small Business Assistance Program. Currently, we have 340 applications that we've received. We're still receiving between five and 10 applications a day. We received 200 applications in the first four hours. We have been sending out denial letters. We have about a 60% denial rate right now. Not every denial letter means it's the end for that small business. A lot of them can correct some of the stuff and resubmit and still get in. If they have any problems, we really want them reaching out so we can assist them and get them in as much as possible. That being said, while it does sound like the program is overobligated right now, we do believe that the current funding set for it will provide for as many of the applications as necessary. If there are any questions, be happy to answer them. If not, please go to our website. Information's being posted there very regularly. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chuck Kinney.
You've got one minute.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Chuck Kinney, coming to you today as the Executive Officer of Kings LAFCO. Wanted to bring to your attention today that last Friday, seven of the eight island areas within the city of Hanford were annexed into the city of Hanford. The county and the city has been working on this for quite some time, and so it is quite the accomplishment. The final, as you can see on the map, the islands that were annexed are in green. The one, I guess it's a pink color, that's left will be coming as soon as the city is able to update their general plan. And I just wanted to let you know that those islands are now in the city.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you. I know that's been a long, long project, so appreciate.
That's all the speaker cards that I have. It does appear there's someone online that has her hand raised. Natalie?
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Natalie Renter, your friendly county librarian from the Kings County Library. I just wanted to update your board on two items very quickly. Last week, you all approved the purchase of the mobile library, and I wanted to let you all know that it's going to be here tomorrow morning. And staff is getting ready to get all trained up to drive the vehicle. We'll probably be officially rolling it out, I want to say sometime late October, early November, once we get all the logistics and procedures worked out. So we're really excited about that. And then, secondly, I just wanted to humbly share that the County of Kings will be awarded $13,639 in infrastructure grant funds. Both of the infrastructure grants will be for Hanford in the tune of $6,600-plus and then our beloved Lamore Branch Library for the tune of $7,19,852. So I did share this with my library advisory board, friends of the library, and library staff. And we are all busting at the seams with excitement, so we wanted to share that with you today. That's it.
Very good. Thank you for delivering some good information there.
You're welcome. As you guys know, Lamore has been a long time, a long time pursuit.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, thank you.
It doesn't appear anyone else has their hands raised, and I have no more speaker cards.
No more. Last call for those in chambers. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reporting out of the closed session held on September 13th. Diane?
Yes, the county took no reportable action on September 13th.
Very good. That's always a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 13th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion. So move. Move by Fagundes. Second by Peterson. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Right.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. We have three items under the consent calendar, all from the Sheriff's Department, or, yeah, I guess the Sheriff's Department's that, the education one too. So have board members had an opportunity to review the consent calendar? Chair will entertain a motion. So move. Move by Fagundes. Second by Peterson. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Chair seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved. Four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items. First item comes from Behavioral Health to talk about a grant agreement.
Good morning again, Chairman Nevs, Board of Supervisors. Katie Arntz, Deputy Director of your Behavioral Health Department. I'm here to request your approval to authorize the Director of Behavioral Health to sign the grant agreement with the California Health Facilities Financing Authority, also known as CHAFA, for investment in the Mental Health Wellness Grant Program for Children and Youth retroactively from February 24th, 2022, through May 31st, 2023, and also adopt the budget changes as well. The Behavioral Health Department was awarded this grant from CHAFA through their investment in mental wellness, it's a long name, Investment in Mental Wellness Grant Program for Children and Youth. This grant will pay for capital startup costs and one year of personnel costs so that the department can develop its very first mobile crisis team here in the community. This team, this first team, will focus on serving children and youth by responding to Kings County schools and also the Child Welfare Services Department as well. Services provided by this team will include triage and screening for suicidality, de-escalation, peer support, coordination with both physical health and mental health providers, and follow-up with the youth and the families as well. We will be coming back to your board at a later date to also be requesting approval for an additional grant that will allow the department to do some planning around creating mobile crisis that will support the entire community 24 hours, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This grant is our first forage into mobile crisis, which would specifically focus on children and youth at schools and Human Services Agency. Upon execution by your Board of this grant, the department will issue a request for proposals in order to identify the service provider, who will actually be out providing those mobile crisis services in the community. And then we would bring that agreement back to your board for approval. We'll also be coming back to your board to request authority to purchase a vehicle, as this grant requires that the county is actually the owner of the vehicle that gets purchased for this program. This agreement is retroactive due to the following timeline and the department's work with CHAFA. The department was emailed notification that we had a pending award on January 27th of '22. The CHAFA board officially approved the funding allocation and the grant on February 24th. We received our formal award notification letter from CHAFA on March 11th, and then we received the proposed agreement from CHAFA on June 2nd. And then from June 2nd to date is the time it's taken to have the grant go through our county process and review process. However, it's important to note that the department has incurred no expenses related to this grant and does not intend to unless your board approves the agreement. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by county council. And in addition, because this isn't in the department's current budget, we are asking for your approval of a budget appropriation and transfer form in order to add the $227,365 into Budget Unit 422400, which is the Behavioral Health Alcohol and Other Drugs Grant Unit. I'm available if you have any questions.
Good. Thank you, Katie. Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions with respect to contract, excuse me, contract itself. I believe it was May to May or March to March or something like so. You're going to go to RFP, you're going to try and hire two people. That timeline is going to expire. I don't know the, I guess you can ask for extensions. Obviously, this took some time. But with respect to the positions, once you get those hired, is there an opportunity for further funding? Or how are we, we're going to hire two people in, you know, very short order? And if you don't get an extension, they might get two months worth of, two or three months of work, and then we're done. So.
Excellent question. Upon, a couple of things. Upon your board's approval, should you approve this grant award, we will be going to CHAFA to request an extension so that we have ample time to complete our RFP process, identify the contractor. The contractor will be able to hire those staff, and we'll have time to expend all of the funds, including that one year of personnel funds. The department has been completing some analysis in terms of how we will be able to sustain this for the long term. Some of this work is Medical billable, and so we will be able to bill Medical in order to pay for these services. And we'll also be looking at our other funding sources, but the department is committed and able to sustain the program operations.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I think the second question, you know, from the timelines, you know, looking beyond this, you're going to service schools, I guess, correct?
Absolutely.
And so, and also, I guess, with the child welfare as well. And that was another question I had. So is it, is it specific to schools? Do you have to have agreements with schools? Or are you invited on campus?
It's truly school by school and district by district. We have two specialty mental health service contractors, both Espirinet and Mental Health Systems, who provide services on schools. And they work with the principals and the superintendents to identify what the school's process is for staff being on campus. And so some schools, they might require that there's a memorandum of understanding and that the contractor provides fingerprinting results. And other schools might not have as tedious, not tedious, as strict of a process. And so each, whoever the contractor is that's identified will be required to work with the schools to ensure, A, that the schools know who they are and how they can help, but B, to ensure that there's no, nothing getting in the way of their ability to respond on campus. We're really excited in that currently because we have yet to get to mobile crisis for particularly on campuses, students who could be experiencing a psychiatric emergency. Oftentimes, it's law enforcement that's responding to campus and then picking up the kiddos in a law enforcement vehicle or in an ambulance to take them over to the hospital. And we're really excited for the possibility that it could be a team of folks in just a car that would be coming to the campus to meet with a student, to support the staff. And then should the student potentially be or need to go to the hospital, potentially be placed on a 5150 hold, that transportation, should the parent agree as well, could happen through the team, which is incredibly less stigmatizing than leaving a campus with law enforcement. Doctor List, did I miss anything? Okay.
That's a really, that's a really crucial point. We're really looking at the stigma that's involved in psychiatric emergencies on campus, and Katie's made the point. But it's just, imagine if you're that kid, you know?
And I guess, you know, from a utilization standpoint, so I would, I guess I was under the, maybe my wrong impression that you would work through the superintendent of schools. There would be some sort of master agreement. But are you saying that it's on an individual school basis, how you contract or have a signed agreement?
It is. It depends on, it's funny, I have to share that often, working for public behavioral health, there's the saying that if you work for a behavioral health department in Kings County, you know Kings County, but you don't know the other counties. Our experience has been that in working with our schools and school districts, that each one is unique. And so it's very important for us in the department and for our contractors to develop really strong relationships with each school district and each superintendent, because each operates very uniquely. And so we, we approach each school and district from the perspective of how they want to work with us versus trying to have them fit into our model.
Great. So, you know, from the utilization point, and believe me, I'm excited about this program. I know we've done a lot of work to build an administrative core, but I still hear a lot of requests that, you know, for whatever reason, may not get filled because of, you know, mental health issues. And so, you know, having the boots on the ground, I think, is very important. And I want to make sure that, you know, the utilization of this program is, you know, maxed out. And so, I mean, are you defining, are you, it's upon request that you will provide these services? Is it a, are you planning on a weekly visit? Because I can see, and if you would to, sorry, define your age bracket for, or the quota for this program as well.
Absolutely. I'll start with the age bracket, which is typically, actually, it would be up to 18, but truly any youth that is in a school in Kings County in K through 12, in addition to any youth that's working with Child Welfare Services. So we don't have, say there's a kiddo on campus that's 19, we're still going to respond. So while it's technically up to 18, of course, any youth, we would respond if they were in one of those two locations. The second piece, Dr. Lewis, might be.
Well, yeah, this is, so this is specifically crisis. So this is for if children, you know, need to be evaluated for psychiatric hospitalization or something like that, or it could be, you know, substance use or something like that. But we have, as you know, recently changed our adult provider, I mean, children's provider, and that particular clinic is doing a lot of outreach to the schools, which Katie, you might want to speak to. So that's the typical providing mental health services, which is not the crisis team. So that would be a different thing. Now, the different providers who are, for instance, providing the children's services could go for this RFP, and that could then be the same provider. So there's a lot of ways that this could shake out in the end, once we do the RFP, which will be really interesting.
And then I would add that our department has a really excellent relationship with the County Office of Education, and they've provided us a seat at their Self-Essential Education Meetings anytime that we'd like to come and present, and each of the districts are represented at those. And so that's been, especially with the changes in our children's providers, both for outpatient mental health services, and we've added California Health Collaborative for Prevention Services, we've been able to introduce them and allow them to present and ask questions at those special education meetings. In addition, Superintendent Barlow has been incredibly helpful as well. So both Rebecca Jensen and Superintendent Barlow. And so I'm really confident that this team will be able to, regardless of the contractor or because of the contractor that's identified, be able to infuse themselves into the campuses across the community.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just thinking about, or, you know, questions popping up and in how you'll apply this. And, you know, so you've got schools and you've got the Child Welfare Services Program. Will this be applicable to any parent that may want to bring or provide that service to, you know, I mean, obviously, we get caught up sometimes in financial, you know, things with respect to what, you know, their income is and things like that. But I just, I just want to make sure that this program, you know, is out there and, you know, that we're not confined to, you know, you're light enough on your feet, that you can respond to, to, to the needs of the community.
Absolutely. So the department's contract with the Department of Healthcare Services that your board approved last week outlines the roles and responsibilities of the mental health plan, which of course include providing outpatient and inpatient services for individuals who are Medical beneficiaries. It also outlines that in terms of the process for assessment for a crisis and also placement at psychiatric hospitals and discharge planning back into the community is for all community members, regardless of insurance type. So that crisis services is the one area that we have within our contract with Department of Healthcare Services that is a community-wide service versus our outpatient and other therapeutic services, which are specifically for individuals who have Medical.
That's great to hear, because, you know, I mean, it just seems like- That's great to hear, because, you know, I mean, it just seems like, you know, we, in today's world, it's, it's difficult to find services and, and, you know, the more broad that we can, more broad stroke that we can paint, the better the communities can be. So thank you for my question.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I think, Katie, private schools are included?
That's an excellent point, Supervisor Nevs. We haven't discussed that. However, we can certainly discuss that with our contracted provider, as there's certainly a need, and it, yeah, it makes complete sense.
Yeah, because I think there's only a couple of private schools, so maybe extend that out. And then community college, even though those students, you know, traditionally over 18, there's a lot of dual enrollment with high school students. And so I would extend that service out to the community colleges as well. Sometimes those students are not always online. I mean, they're mostly online students and not in person, but you may have some crossover there.
Absolutely. And we also have a contract, and the department has a contract with a clinician. Her name is Singling. And Singling provides brief therapeutic services at West Hills College and also the Hanford COS campus as well. And so this would be an additional partnership with those campuses, and I think that's really wonderful and such an important population to serve.
Yeah, especially the crisis intervention side of it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? This is an action item. Chair will entertain.
No questions or comments. Move for adoption.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Valley. Discussion, further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the item, let the record show, the item stands approved for in favor. One absent. Thank you very much. Next item comes from Department of Finance, and I don't see Jim here, but Tammy, you've got the, you've got the duty? Megan duty, Megan's got the duty. Good morning, Megan. Thank you for being here. You want to talk about software program?
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Megan Campbell, Treasury Manager with the Department of Finance. I'm here today requesting approval of the Tracker Debt Management System contract. As you may know, the Treasurer's Office is responsible for the ongoing maintenance of 30 school district debt obligation bonds and four county bonds that are paid semi-annually with the payments totaling over 15 million. The Tracker system will cost $10,000 per year and assist us in better managing the increasing number of debt issuance we are responsible for. As the debt issuances increase, the harder it is to track these payments. Managing these debt obligation bonds can be very complex and can be a liability to the county if any of these payments are not made on time. To select a debt management system, we held conference calls and went through demos with three different systems. Tracker was the most cost-effective and user-friendly option for what we need. Tracker will not only help manage payments, but they will also input all of our bonds into the system by pulling this information from the Electronic Municipal Market Access website, which is the official source for municipal securities, data, and documents. This will eliminate errors and ensure accuracy. Each fiscal year, the property tax manager and the treasury manager verify that we both have the correct payment amounts for the year, but Tracker will allow both managers to access and use the system to verify payments are scheduled timely and that the correct amount is being collected in taxes to make these payments. This system will also allow us to track payments on any leases we have throughout the county. Thank you for your consideration. We ask that you approve the contract for Tracker Debt Management System.
Very good. Thank you, Megan. Questions or comments? Megan loves a challenge.
Well, I have 10 pages of questions.
Oh, my God.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions or comments, move for adoption.
Good, thank you. Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Valley. Additional discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye. I think.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
I swallowed a fly, sorry.
Let the record show, four in favor, one absent. Good job, Megan.
Thank you so much.
Excited. The next three items come from Public Works. First one is approved, Track 931. Mitchell, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with Public Works. The first item I have before your board this morning is a request for your board to approve the Jackson Ranch Track 931 subdivision improvement agreement and authorize the chairman of the board to sign the agreement. This tentative track map, 931, was approved by the Advisory Agency, February 1st of 2021. And by approving this agreement, the developer will be able to begin construction on the project. Utica Avenue roadway improvements, 25th Avenue new alignment, the roundabout, and various lots that will be available for businesses in the area. Owners and developers, members of the owners and developers, John Lash and Larry Bros are in attendance, and staff has been working with them to approve the plans for these roadway improvements to get this much-needed project in the county going forward. The costs for review and inspections will be recouped with various fees, and our goal is to request your board to approve this subdivision improvement agreement. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments, or concerns about the subdivision improvement agreement?
I, I have one question, if I may, before.
Oh, you don't count.
I received some information that there might be a small modification to the agreement in the bond amount. Did you address that? Or is that different than the version of the agreement that was presented as part of the agenda item?
No, thank you for calling that out. I missed that. There is a change in the agreement that was published at the request of the owners and developers, and work that was already done, a revised engineer's estimate was completed. So the amounts shown on the document you have for 7 million and then 3 million for the bonds, 150 and 10%, have been lowered to 6 million, and then 3 million, and then 600 for the 10%. So the bond amounts have been lowered to reflect work that the developer has already completed on the site, and the updated engineer's estimates, Exhibit B, has been replaced to reflect those changes.
There must be a mistake, because most of the time you round up.
Work's been done, so.
Any other questions or comments? And I guess, Diane, we will approve this as amended?
Yes, as amended.
Okay.
Motion to approve item is amended, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Second? Moved by Valley as amended, seconded by Peterson. Additional discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. You want to continue and talk about the agreement letter for removal of trees?
Yes. Okay, so this second item, supporting the chairman and members of the board, is a request to approve an agreement letter with the property owner of 21935 Fremont Avenue in Kings County, Jesus Andrade. This agreement letter provides a time extension for the property owner to remove trees that are currently encroaching in the county right-of-way. So on April 20th and June 21st of last calendar year, 2021, notice was given to the then prior property owner that the last row of trees was within the county right-of-way. So notice was given to remove those trees out of the right-of-way. County staff was working with county council and the previous property owner's legal team to, to resolve the issue. At the end of, near the end of the calendar year, 2021, Jesus Andrade became the new property owner, so he purchased the property. So county staff re-initiated the process with the property owner to get the encroachment out of the right-of-way. County council reviewed and drafted the letter that would allow the trees to remain within the county right-of-way under specific conditions, which would be that by the end of this calendar year, 2022, he would have to remove them. This would allow the property owner to do one final harvest on the row of trees, and it wouldn't be a big financial burden at the time of notice. So it gives him that time to recoup some of those costs before having to remove that encroachment. But the main point would be that the property owner would have to indemnify the county and hold harmless for any claims that would arise if anything were to occur due to those trees being in the right-of-way. So if something occurred, legal issues ensued, it would be placed upon the property owner's responsibility to handle that matters. So county council, Sean and Diane's team were able to prepare the letter. Property owner was willing to set those conditions and signed, so we would request that your board give for that time extension. If the property owner does not comply, so let's say at the end of December, he hasn't removed the trees, following the street and highway codes, the road commissioner can have those encroachments removed, and then the financial responsibility will be on the property owner. But if you have any other questions, we'd be willing to help.
Very good.
One, one question with respect to the indemnity side of things. So do they have to show insurance as a form of that guarantee?
The, the agreement did not include an insurance as the form of the guarantee. What it did do, and it's on a separate matter, is acknowledge that if they do not comply with the terms of the agreement, then it's an automatic acknowledgement that there is an infraction and, and waive any right to appeal that. So we did build in that, but we could amend it to include the insurance terms if the board would want that.
I, I don't know, just, we know how easy it is for the county to be sued and for the most simplest of reasons, but I, I'll leave it to the, the. Well, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with that, I guess, not, not having the county guaranteed. I, I mean, if, if it's in a written notification in your experience in a court, court of law, is, are we, are we indemnified?
Well, they would have the obligation to indemnify, but your point is, is well-taken and valid, that we should probably ensure that. And I, I would think that it would be appropriate to, to direct staff to include an insurance clause in there according to the county's general insurance requirements. And if you want to prove that today, then we could approve that with a modification of that. If not, then we could bring it back with the insurance terms in it, but it's a valid point.
Yeah, with that, I, I think it's, it's necessary. Probably, nothing's probably going to happen, but my life experience, it does, so.
Chair. And I, I lean towards the thoughts of Supervisor Peterson as well. Is this the, the liability, the main liability is these trees in the county right-of-way create a blind intersection?
No, so part of the concern is we've, we've had the adjacent property owner has, on various occasions, complained that when they're trying to leave their property, they're not able to see, so it's an obstruction. Also, when you drive that road, the trees are, are encroaching past, you know, we've had them state, they're clearly, a surveyor went out and showed us the right-of-way, so it's clearly within the county right-of-way, and it leaves no room for a shoulder. So, you know, county road crews can't get in there and do roadwork, and any car that would need to pull off to the side at that location would have to go somewhere else, because it leaves no room.
Except, it's nowhere near an intersection, it's just a straight road?
There is an intersection south of that, but there's enough room where you would be able to see.
You can see.
But there is a private drive?
Private drive that doesn't allow the owner to come out the way they want. And then if the owner's coming out across the street, then he has a blind approach.
And part of, part of the agreement was that the property owner, and they have already removed the first five trees in that row, to kind of show that property owner, hey, we're, we're taking the steps to remediate the issue.
So then if we ask the property owner to, to buy insurance, how, how does that balance out?
Well, I don't think you, you're asking, I think you're showing, you're asking him for proof of insurance.
Oh, I get it, okay.
Yeah.
Because then my question was going to be if he had to buy insurance, what does that level out, balance out to leaving them up just for the harvest? What would the value of the harvest be, be verse paying for that? Or, or just taking them down now and getting rid of the, of the problem? I mean, is the, the, the neighbor, is he, is, are they fine with waiting till the end of the year, or is this something they were asking for ASAP, and is it a longstanding problem?
So as you can see, it's been ongoing for about two years now. We started last, so middle of 2021 with the previous property owner, their legal team, previous county council staff, and Public Works staff working on the issue. It got sold, we had to start over again. The property owner has been, the, the neighboring property owner has been happy with the time it's taken, but they understand that, you know, the steps and the reasoning behind it was to not be an immediate financial burden on a property owner. You know, if, if it was, if they were in that situation, it'd be the same scenario. We would give them that opportunity to recuperate some of the costs.
I understand, and we, the county, we've been in that, on the reverse end of this, on the roundabout on Highway 43 there at Wiltney and Corcoran, and the, the farmer, the grower that had just planted a few years ago, very young trees there in the swath of the roundabout, was going to wipe out a lot of his trees that hadn't even had their first harvest yet. So I know we appreciate when people are being a little patient for us and working with us and, and the state, well, High Speed Rail worked with us on that issue too, so I don't know, I guess, I guess I'd be fine with, with the majority on how you would want to handle this, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? This is an action item. You want to go ahead and add the insurance writer?
I guess, proof of, of, yeah.
Okay.
Indemnity.
We, we will add an, an, a proof of insurance clause to accompany the indemnity clause. And with that addition, my understanding is the motion to us to approve the agreement with an addition of a proof of insurance clause.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Moved by Peterson.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Valley. Thank you very much. Additional discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Mitchell, you want to wrap it up with the lease for the Farm Service Agency in the Ag Building?
Yes. So this last item is a request for your board to approve lease amendment number seven, which would be retroactive from January of this calendar year, 2022, and be in effect until December of 2024. Previous amendments were done in 2016 and 2019, bringing the lease to its current standing. The United States Department of Agriculture, the Farm Service Agency, requested this extension. They currently lease 4,082 rentable square feet of office space in the Ag Building, so Suites C and E. The previous lease expired January of this year, and they've been operating on a month-by-month basis since that time, so they have submitted this request for the lease amendment. Currently, county staff is also working on a updated lease with the USDA, so this amendment would be an interim measure until the new lease has been finalized. The item for that previous lease was brought to your board end of last year, and we're currently working with the USDA Realtor staff to get that lease finalized. This amendment will keep the existing pricing, so the annual amount of $95,519 on an annual basis, which is based on a $23 per square foot lease cost for those 4,082 rentable square feet. So in the future, county staff will be bringing the updated lease to your board, but in the meantime, we're requesting that your board approve this seventh lease amendment to the existing USDA Ag Building lease.
Very good. Thank you.
No questions or comments? Move for adoption.
Moved by Peterson.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Valley. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Good job. The next items come from administration. First one is to consider the use of American Rescue Plan Act. Kiria?
Good morning, Board members. Kiria Martinez, Assistant County Administrative Officer. I am here to present some items before your board. Kings County received $29,706,802 of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, also known as ARPA funds, under the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds legislation. The funds are intended to provide support in responding to impact of COVID-19 and their efforts to contain COVID-19 in the communities and to support residents and businesses. We have been coming to your board to present various items for approval. Some were added in last year's budget through the adoption process and some through separate action items. Today, we are presenting nine projects with each department who submitted. Here today are here to discuss their items. The current proposed amount of ARPA funds at this time is $2,082,000. The current proposed amount of ARPA funds at this time is $227,769. At this time, I am going to hand it over to the departments who brought the items to the ARPA committee, then speak on the fiscal impact, and then I will conclude with the request from your board. This time, I will hand it over to the clerk of the board for the first project, $500,000 for board chambers upgrade.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Catherine Ventrelli, clerk to the board. Also here for this project are Lauren Ayton from Teter Architects, Jim Henderson from Public Works Building Maintenance, Erin Reyes from IT is online, Brian Sapien from IT is here in the office or in the room, and Brian Peters from Sound Contracting. I don't see him online, that might be my fault because I may not have sent him the correct information for today. So I apologize. If there's anyone else for that project, just let me know. We're here to request additional funding for the board chambers upgrade. Since COVID hit in 2020, staff has been piecing together equipment for us to be able to allow for public access and these temporary solutions have worked on and off for the last two and a half years. Last year, the board approved $150,000 in upgrades. All of those, all of the equipment has been purchased. The multipurpose room upgrades are installed and we are just awaiting for the board chambers to be installed. And due to the changes in the scope of work and some more demands for equipment, we now have an architect and I'll turn it over to Lauren to discuss why the scope has changed. And he's very familiar with our projects and he can do a much better job on this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again. Lauren Ayton, Teter Architects and Engineers. So I was originally invited to join the project as a support person in terms of dealing with some of the technology upgrades that were proposed. Through the course of this work, you know, numerous, numerous things, items have been identified in the space that needed further consideration. Mainly, one of the things that we're considering is a lot of accessibility upgrades that have long been put aside for this room. There's a number of, obviously, we have a contoured floor in here. We have a number of steps and other barriers that really need to be removed. So in the process of this project, you know, which had started with a technology upgrade, which subsequently led to an abatement of a material that needs to be removed to allow the technology upgrade, then we sort of segued into starting to look at other aspects of the room that needed to be done. So by the time we're done re-contouring the floor, we started into getting into a situation where we're just looking at a general face uplift of the main space. So while the scope of the work is still limited in terms of what we're actually touching, by the time we're done in here, we're talking about replacement of the, doing a lot of work to the floor to remove barriers, replacement of the seating, replacement of the lighting to bring it up into current energy code in terms of LED lighting, which will also provide a benefit of enhanced indemnability and opportunity to control the lighting more in the space. So what we have really here is just a series of additional items that have been identified through the course of the work that it felt was timely to have them being addressed, being the space is still essentially the same it was in 1977. So it hasn't, much work, or very little work has been done in this space to bring it into compliance with ADA and with current accessibility requirements. Any questions on the board on any of those items?
You're not going to touch the orange felt wallpaper, are you?
No.
Actually, right now, the walls are the one item that are not a part of the scope. We're floors and ceiling, lighting, but we're not touching the walls. So those have been, yeah. But we are going to, part of it's going to be to do a general facelift to the actual dais bench, you know, recognize that the finish of it needs to be redone and we're going to be redoing the work surfaces that all of you use on the table to, again, for the part of the technology enhancements.
All I know is they must really like Rusty. They wait till I leave and then they're going to fix it up.
That was part of the plan.
Right?
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
At this time, we have an additional request of $280,000 from the Information Technology Department.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anthony Wleki. I have today, I'm terrible at public speaking, I'm sorry. That's why I got into IT.
Wait, what about comedian? Hand up, I'll break the ice for you.
The request we have submitted today is for enhanced security via multi-factor authentication. Typically, authenticating a user has been done via username and password for the last, since computers became a thing. With mobile workforce and people transitioning out and working from home, we've added a second, a lot of the requirements have been changed to add multi-factor authentication, including finance. Don't like to pass out right now.
You're good, you're good. Firefighter behind him?
No worries, brother.
Yeah, no, I sat there because I was going to fall backwards into my chair.
If you want me to jump in, Anthony, it just makes it two forms of login possible. So basically, when you say you have a device and you log in, it tells you, it sends a code to your phone. And then we discussed the issue of it being an actual personal phone or a token. So we ahead and went with the route of a token. So then employees will have a token where it'll send, you'll have to enter that code once they log into their computer. It's more for security purposes.
And I'll try to answer any questions, but.
You're doing good, don't worry.
Yeah, I apologize.
Thank you, Anthony.
It's fine. Thank you.
It's fine.
And next, we have an additional request from, on the board side for $600,000 for a record preservation project.
Morning again, Chairman, members of the board. Catherine Ventrelli, clerk to the board. We're also here today for this project is Angelique Nasser from CoFile. I believe online is Mark or Mike Moriarty or Dave Baldwin from the company. Kristy Lee from the Assessor Clerk Recorder is here, who has worked with CoFile. And Dave Robinson, who has gone to work with CoFile and had a request for this project. And possibly even Chuck Kenny might want to say something since he's one of our regular customers who uses these books. I'm here today to request funding and they call it the clerk of the board record preservation project. It's really the Board of Supervisors Record Preservation Project. The county was created in 1893 in the Minute Books. That was used to keep the actions from the original Board of Commissioners then, is now, which is now the Board of Supervisors, is still being used today. And I actually have them up on the front. I have the original book that created Kings County open to the page when it was actually adopted. And next to it are the Board of Supervisors Ordinance Book. And then next to that is a completed book by CoFile that Kristy Lee has brought over after her project has been completed to see what the final books look like. These books that we have are accessed and time hasn't been good to them. They're invaluable books that it is our history and if we don't preserve them, we won't have them around. And this was spearheaded by Supervisors Verboon and Peterson. They actually attended a CSAC conference in 2018 and met Patty Milton, who is a great salesperson. And she got right with me, we worked on the project and we had to shelf it because of the cost. And in comes Angelique. She came in 2021, we started working on the project and we've been on the fast train. She's a real pusher to get this done. And this is a great project, I would love to see this get done. It will preserve the book. She'll give you more information on that, but this is invaluable documents that we don't want to lose and they're not going to be around for much longer in the state that they are. So I'll turn it over to Angelique and she'll address what the project is and where we're going.
Good morning, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Angelique Nasser with CoFile. And as Catherine mentioned, I have two colleagues that are online joining us. I have Dave Baldwin, who is our Vice President for the Western Region, and then Mike Moriarty, who's been working with your county for a very long time. He's our subject matter expert. So I'm going to give you a little background about CoFile, what we're doing with other counties, and then go over the actual project where we're requesting these funds. If you could go to the next slide, please. And so we've been doing preservation for records and digitizing records for counties all over the US. Here in California, we work with all but one county, one small county up north. So a lot of counties are already aware of our work and we've been working with you guys for three decades. So we appreciate the continued partnership in expanding this with the minutes and ordinance books. And I should also mention, we are the sole provider of this type of service. And we are eager to continue working with you guys and very honored and want to thank the ARPA committee for allowing this opportunity to allocate some funds for this project. And as you can see, here's a sample of some of the counties we're working with across the United States that are using ARPA funds for preservation work with CoFile. Next slide, please. And by preserving and digitizing your records, you're ensuring the accessibility and security of these documents, of these valuable historical records and making them accessible to the public. And by, you know, one of the key things to keep in mind is, you know, just by digitizing, that may not be enough because local government agencies are susceptible for malware and ransomware attacks. I mean, you've probably seen a lot, heard of a lot of these, and just in the private sector as well. So I have to get a question from county, so why don't we just digitize and not worry about the physical record? Well, that's fine, except for if you were to get attacked and that's your only copy is, you know, in the web, online. So you want to have multiple copies of this and preserve the original record, just in case you do get hacked. You know, also by digitizing them ensures the accessibility. So you want to be able to access, have access to these at all times, even when there's an office closure, a disaster, and even during the pandemic. So that puts a heavy burden on the staff if you don't have electronic copy and, you know, they're not able to come in the office or they have to quarantine. So this relieves that pressure on the staff. And this is one of the services and one of the, that offers services to all citizens, you know, not just today's citizens, but for the future. So definitely keep that in mind too by offering this accessibility. Next slide, please. And here's a summary of the scope of work that we're proposing for this project. So we're looking at preserving and digitizing 50 original record books. These are minutes and ordinances as well as loose files that are located in 78 boxes in the warehouse. We're looking to put these, here's some examples of original unfinished copies. I'm going to show you a sample of what the product looks like for the binder that we'll place these in. So I know the reporter's office do not have these. These are called our disaster safe binder. So that's something I've talked to Catherine about doing. And this, these are water and fire resistant. So we're excited about doing this. In addition, inside, this is just a sample, this is from one of our, a sample here. What we're going to do is we're going to treat each of the pieces of paper to deacidify it. So that's stopping the deterioration process. And once we repair it and deacidify it, we're going to put it in these Mylar envelopes here. So we'll put each page into one of these binders and then we're also going to place these binders into new shelving that's going to efficiently store these in the office. That's part of the proposal as well. And I think the key, key part that, you know, Catherine and I have been talking about that I think is going to help with this accessibility is by digitizing all these records. So you'll be able to access these 24 by 7 online at any time, you know, remotely. Keep in mind that the materials we're looking at, it's roughly over 302,000 instruments pages that we're looking at preserving and this spans over 100-year period of history, historical records. And the proposal we put together is for $750,000. However, we put in the proposal a not-to-exceed clause to ensure we stay within the allotted amount for the ARPA funds. So that kind of concludes what I had prepared. I don't know if there's anything else, Catherine, you'd like me to share or any other questions from the board members?
I just wanted to say that originally, we were only coming in to ask for a little under $200,000. And thank you to the ARPA committee who asked if we could expand the scope of this project to see if we can include all of our documents. So she and I and a couple of IT staff were over in the warehouse over two-day period pulling documents. And in that process, we actually found seven books that belong to the Board of Supervisors I never knew existed. So those are also going to be included in this. And as well as the sheriff has asked to include his very first booking ledger and we're going to include that in our project as well. So we did put in the clause of not to exceed 600,000 because that is what the ARPA committee recommended and we appreciate them recommending that. So we will work to get as much done as we can for that amount and get us at least into this century to be able to search these records. Because this is a very cumbersome project for a person like, say, Chuck Kenny, when he asks for us to search for something, it's not something that's easily found. And I'm the only one that actually knows how to research these books right now. I can teach people, but it takes time to learn because you have to have out-of-the-box thinking. They didn't think, you're right, or log things the way they, we do them now. So it can take weeks for me to find a, it's the needle in the haystack, I always say. So thanks, Chuck. But it is good for me because I do learn a lot of stuff about the county and if someone else asks for a research project, I can say, hey, I researched and I remember something on that. So we just appreciate them bringing this forward, asking for more money for us and we'll do everything we can to get as much done on that project. I'm excited about it, but it is the Board of Supervisors Preservation Project.
I'll get better when you see your name on it.
Well, thank you. I've been telling everyone I would like to have this done before I retire, so. She promises me it'll be done by five years, so.
Most definitely, yes, definitely.
Mr. Chairman, so that, those containers, if I understand right, you're going to take each page out separately or you're going to try to fit the book in the?
No, what we do, we take each page out. So we're going to get rid of the old bindings. So we're going to completely get rid of it, take repair, mend, you know, remove tape because that deteriorates, the glue and tape deteriorates the paper. Then we're going to physically treat each page with like a solution, essentially liquid tums to deacidify them. So each and every page we're going to go through, as well as we're going to scan every page as well and then encapsulate it into the Mylar envelopes and place it into here. So it's quite a tedious process going through every single page to ensure it lasts centuries to come.
Should throw in five more of those for the board and make a great lunchbox in our agenda.
And you can even put your name on this too. So we can do dedications as well, yeah.
And then also.
Everything's within budget.
If you have more questions for her, and then I'd like for Kristy to speak on, she has actually had the project.
Yeah, no, you just spent a lot of time on searching and how we access, you know, the records of this county. And I'm just curious, when you digitize those, is there a search engine that fits that now is much more relevant and can find those keywords?
Yeah, so the whole process, and I have Mike too, I might have him chime in to help me. But we're going to index it, so you'll be able to search keywords and we're going to index it when we're going through this. We're matching the books with the index. So part of the project involves digitizing those index books that are aligned with these books. Mike, was there anything you wanted to add in terms of the digitizing and the search tool, Quicklink?
No, I think you hit that pretty well.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you can hear me, but yeah, it's all linked together. So you can do, you know, instead of three minutes per search, and if you have, you know, four or five searches, that really adds up a half hour time, you can do that in a tenth of a second. So it becomes almost, you know, the speed of Google, as I say. So if you have, you know, several searches in a day you have to complete, this is life-changing. It really saves time and time is very valuable these days, so.
And also I'll mention too, you know, if you look at some of these older books from the 1800s, you know, it's handwritten. So sometimes it's hard to read. So part of our, what we do is visually go in and ensure that it's readable. And that's another key part of digitizing, is ensuring that it's legible. Because sometimes, you know, what we do is take the brown out, make it so it's almost like a new copy, essentially. Because if you just preserve, just digitize without preserving, those images might be poor and you can't even read them. So they're useless. That's why it's important to do both, the preservation of the physical and then digitizing them.
The next generation won't be able to read it anyway.
And that's my concern, yeah, because it's.
You know, so yeah, you almost have to do that anyway because the next generation's going to have a very difficult time.
Yes, and we have had these books, we have them in the original format, we have them in microfilm, but the microfilm is very poor. You cannot read the microfilm, so this is the. So this is the next best process for us.
And we, once we digitize it, we will also provide new microfilm, fresh new microfilm that you'll be able to access. So you have essentially three copies of your records.
And currently in our office, we have eight different types of media I have to research for our project. So it would be nice to, my hopes are eventually to have them all combined into one web-based searchable program.
So with respect to public interest and, and, you know, this is public record, I guess? It is a public record. And so this will be something that the county will host as well for interest outside of the county family?
That's something we have recently been talking about, and we probably need to work with county council to see if it's going to be accessible by the public. There may be some kind of confidentiality issues. All of ours are searchable, but there might be some, something that might prohibit us from being able to allow the public, but we would be able to allow any staff member to do the research or county employee.
There are restrictions, you know, on some land, I think on Christie's side, on a recorder's side, for land records, but for most of what we're talking about can remain searchable for the public.
Yeah.
Well, not that I want to give, you know, someone access to the, the keys of the county, right? You know, but, but, you know, historians and, you know, I mean, instead of bugging the clerk, which, you know, it's not a bug, I mean, we serve the people, but, but it does take time. And just curious how that format might be or not be available to the community.
Our hopes are to make it available to the public. And that was my, one of my first thoughts is if we use the ARPA money, I wanted it to be accessible to anyone. So that was what we tried to work towards, getting a program that would be accessible and trying to find out who would host it and all of those parameters. And I think we've got that lined up, so.
It's a, it's a web-based tool, so what we're looking at, so something we'd host.
I leave all that to them, I just deal with the books.
Yeah. At some point, the, there's a cutoff date, right? As far as history? I mean, no one's going to preserve these minutes.
Correct. We're only working on 1893 to 1997.
Got it.
Yeah, anything after 1997 is not on paper that is going to disintegrate or things like that. And we actually have everything digitized from 2000 to current.
Got it.
So, but we want to incorporate all of that into one search engine.
Any other questions, comments?
Was that it, Mr. Chairman? That's all the questions?
The sheriff?
Christie, Christie might want to talk about, she's worked with the.
Christie, you want to talk about?
And then the sheriff might want to talk about, the sheriff now is going to have a project.
So Christie Lee is Esther Clark Recorder. Can I approach?
Yes.
This happens to be a public document, and it is. As you all know, we have a lot of birth, death, and marriage certificates, which aren't necessarily public documents in the same respect that the index is. So COFILE has been a great partnership. They've been doing our books and records since before I was elected. And we do a few each year because we have funding that's called Record Modernization Fund, which comes with each recording and each final record. So there's a dollar from each that is put into that fund, and that's the money we use to do these books and records. We're getting there. We're, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel on these, we're almost done, but we just do so many every year, depending on our, our budget and what we can pull from that, that trust fund that we have. But we have worked with COFILE for a long time. I would encourage you to, you know, move forward with this project, because these types of records are very important. We did not go with the fire encasing. Basically, it's not that it isn't well worth it and probably the right way to go, but prior to me coming on, they were not doing that. I don't know if it was an available option. And our storage cabinets do not fit either. And so we just kept going forward with the way we are preserving them. I think, I think that's about it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. COFILE has been great to work with, they're, you can just call them up, they're easy to answer questions and, and a great company, so.
And those records are also indexed as well? You can?
Yes, we do have them electronic and in this format, both.
Good. Any questions?
Sheriff, did you have anything you want to say?
I'm more concerned about the statute of limitations on some of this stuff.
We're only working on his very first book, so it might be some of your family members in there.
The preservation book, I think by now most of you have seen the book, from 1893 to 1941. And so that's the book that's included. But in, in light of that, recently, we had an inquiry into a death from 1906, and, which then posed the question by me to my staff, is like, how many of these books do we have? And so we have 20 corner books as well, that all date back to 1893 for every death that occurred and the coroner inquest that occurred because of that death. And so we'll be working with COFILE to put together a proposal to bring back to the board at some point, hopefully here in the near future, because it is important, obviously, to preserve these records. And if you want to know a little bit about your family history and, and things like that, and they died in Kings County, we have the records, but we won't if we don't preserve them and keep them in a safe place. So, thank you.
Long as you don't have an index to the aliases, that'll be. Any other questions? Ms. Martinez, you want to close?
Yes, we actually have a few more projects, so.
Sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and.
Close it out.
I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Lance to intro the next item, $75,000.
Morning again, supervisors. The item before you today is something that's actually supported as well by Kings County Economic Development Corporation. There is an interest and a, a very substantive interest in preserving the natural resources in Kings County, especially since we are so agrarian-based. About one quarter of all of our jobs are ag-based. And the largest private contributor to our local GDP is agriculture as well, by about 300 million over manufacturing. So supporting entities like this entity and ensuring that they have the capacity to ensure natural resources remain in the community going forward is absolutely critical. I'll pass it over to Dusty, you can give a little more specifics on it, though.
Morning, thanks for being here. Good morning. You guys know me as my role as the Executive Director of the Kings County Farm Bureau. However, you guys may not know that for the last year and a half, Farm Bureau has been responsible for managing the Excelsior Kings River Resource Conservation District, and that's who I'm here representing today. For a long time, the resource conservation, early on, did a lot of good work in the county. And like most of these districts that, you know, through the 80s and 90s, they kind of waned a little bit. And I've been charged with, with revitalizing that resource conservation district. We represent the majority of Kings County, of Kings County on the east side of the county, a small portion in the northwest corner of Tulare County, and a small portion of Fresno County up through the Riverdale area. So we're here requesting $75,000. Really, through COVID, we didn't have a lot of opportunity to fundraise or, or work on projects. And I'm happy to tell you guys that in the last 18 months, we've applied for four different grants, all focused on water resources here in the county and that district, and that's what we're here for today. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. The next project we have is from the Finance Department, $196,750.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Vanessa Hernandez, I'm the payroll manager of the Finance Department. Today, we are requesting $196,750 to begin the scope of our project to upgrade People Tools and apply the latest PUM images to the PeopleSoft environments, including migrating and updating the SQL server to the latest version, which is 2019. Purpose of this project is to obtain Oracle support, as the county's current version of People Tools 8.56 is unsupported. Oracle will no longer issue critical patches, patch updates for the 8.56 version of tools. And Cherry Road, the county's PeopleSoft consultants, will not have the ability to escalate issues to Oracle for support in the event that they are unable to resolve them on their own. You have any questions for me?
Thank you. Next, we have Public Works, $100,000 for shade structures.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dominic Tiberzki, Public Works Director. I am before you this morning to present the request for $100,000 in ARPA funds to supplement the Proposition 68 grant-funded Parks Improvement Project. On August 17th, 2021, your board approved the consultant agreement with QK to prepare plans and specifications for this project, the scope of which is to provide shade structures for two existing structure, play structure installations, each at Hickey Embursed Parks, for a total of four shade canopies. Additionally, ADA improvements will be constructed connecting parking areas with these four play structures. As approved by your board, the current budget includes $400,000 from Proposition 68 grant, $80,000 from the Larry Hillbloom Foundation, and $20,000 in general fund contribution for a total project budget of $500,000. Due to rising construction materials costs, this leaves a budget shortfall of $100,000 per the most recent engineer's estimate. The department has submitted the request for ARPA funding on this project as it fits within the guidelines stipulated in the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds overview of the final rule. Particularly by addressing effective service delivery, as stated on page 28 of the final rule, outdoor recreational facilities will be enhanced by providing complete shading to the four existing play structure installations. As we all recall, pandemic impacts included the shutting down of parks and other gathering areas during the early stages. However, as the economy reopened and more research was done on COVID-19, it was found that fresh air and sunlight are major factors in combating virus transmission. In addition to promoting physical health, outdoor recreation also improves and supports mental health. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you.
The next two projects are from the Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I stepped over here because in case Jim wants to jump up, I wanted to make sure there's a microphone available for him. That's a hint. So.
Hint, 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 hint.
$144,738 Kings County Public Works to influence janitorial cleaning within the Kings County Jail. So one of the things that occurred over the last few years, as your board is well aware, as we work towards increasing our capacity at the jail, when I took office 12 years ago, we averaged about 300 inmates and 313 beds. Now we have the capacity of 637 beds, and we're averaging about 450 to 460 inmates per day. Recently, our staffing levels, we had 20 vacancies and 19 positions that were on some type of leave, whether it be FLSA, FMLA, and so that's about 40 positions that are not in the facility. With the growth of our facility, the pandemic, what we've recognized, and, and this is where Jim comes in, is that we need better janitorial services for our staff within the facility. We've added break rooms, we've added bathrooms and other staff areas. But our staff historically would just pull inmates out of their cell, give them a, give them a bucket, some clean supplies, and have them go in and clean. What that entails, though, is that you have to supervise those inmates when they're in those staff areas. And so recently, the Kings County Detentions Deputy Services Association had reached out to county human resources, and one of their concerns was, that was brought out during the pandemic, is the lack of cleanliness in the staff areas within the facility. And so they were trying to work with HR to make sure that that was brought, you know, to the forefront, so that way that could be addressed going forward. HR then reached out to Jim, and we reached out to county council, and as a team, we've kind of come up with a plan to hopefully address that issue. And, and Jim, if you don't mind speaking to what this would do for your staffing and what your needs are to accomplish what I'm asking for.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, so when they reached out to us, we're, we're stretched pretty thin right now, so I let the sheriff know if we could get three additional staff, we'd be able to, you know, fulfill his request. And our janitorial staff, you know, they're trained, you know, to mitigate like viruses and different diseases, and, and we do hold trainings and stuff where you see the trustees who are cleaning in there, they're just swapping the mop and they're cross-contaminating and they're probably using the same towel that they're doing the toilet to clean the sink, you know, where we, we have a process of dealing with that. So we're happy to help out with the sheriff.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. And so we did, during the pandemic, we obviously brought in some air filter systems and things like that, but it really gets down into that deep cleaning that needs to take place. And, and I tell people all the time, the pandemic is one thing, but on a, on a daily, annual, monthly, yearly basis, we run into other issues that come into our facility, whether it's just the annual flu, whether it's lice, whether it's tuberculosis. We have outbreaks that occur throughout the year, and, and COVID is just another piece to that puzzle now. And so the request would be to get us through this first year, because obviously we've already been through the budget process utilizing the ARPA funds, and then we would then work with county administration going into the next fiscal year to make sure we just included those increases in our ongoing budget going forward to address the cleanliness issue within the facility that we have. So we'd be happy to answer any questions on that topic, if you have any.
No, no questions. Very good, Jim, thank.
Comment. I would just say for fiscal, right, while the manpower you mentioned that's in there, I mean, I don't know, we got any Marine Corps veterans in here, but every Thursday in the Marine Corps, starting in boot camp, everything shuts down Thursday evening, right? So boot camp's three months long, I live with 100 recruits in a squad bay, and trust me, them 20 toilets, you could, you're not going to eat off them, but they're that clean, right? We got trained by a drone instructor. You come in here, you clean it up. So I don't know, spending more money to bring people in to come clean, that's like in-house training and, and get that manpower that's in there to, to clean and clean ver, and clean very well. So, I mean, I'm supportive of what you want to do, Sheriff. I'm just saying, there's some manpower in there that could probably get some good training and, and spick and span.
And really where it comes down to is, you know, the inmates, we don't get to pick and choose which people decide to, you know, have the accusation of violating laws when they come into the facility, and some are really good and some aren't. But as your board's aware, we've also opened up other vocational programs, you know, the pheasant raising programs, the car wash program, the wood splitting program. So you're taking those inmates and you're moving them out into those other programs. Well, those were also some of the same inmates that did some of the cleaning for us before. And so that turnover rate, and then with the staff turnover rate, and your board has been gracious enough over the last 10 years to really increase the salary and benefit package to the, the detentions deputies and the detentions technicians. And so when you look at fiscal responsibility and you're paying a detentions deputy, you know, somewhere in the range of $30 to $35 an hour to supervise an inmate to clean a restroom, when you can bring in a janitorial service who's actually trained in that area for $20 an hour, and I don't know, Jim, do you speak to what their hourly rate is? Mathematically, it's not making much sense anymore either.
Step one is, I think, about four cents over minimum wage currently. And like Sheriff said, they're trained, they know which chemicals to use, what's the disinfective, what they're using for cleaning. We do hold trainings, monthly trainings. We bring in outside resources to, you know, train them and keep them updated to the current cleaning supplies. So, and I have seen the inmates cleaning, there's not a lot of love when they're cleaning.
Their bathroom is going to be cleaner than our bathroom.
Yeah, and the funny thing is, is usually the high-profile ones, the single cell, they're the one, the ones you can't bring out are the ones that kind of, they keep their cells pretty tidy and clean, but.
So you're not going to require a deputy to protect your staff?
No, so our, our staff are actually all deputized through the Sheriff's Department, so they can actually work in the jail and.
Really, Public Works employees?
We do, when, when they hire staff, we do backgrounds on their staff as well, the ones that will, that will be in confidential areas. And so if you're working in a confidential capacity where we need you to, you know, pass certain restrictions, such as, you know, not being a convicted felon or a convicted misdemeanorant and, you know, other history items, gang items, then we, we cross-deputize them so they can not only work within the facility, but also supervise inmates. So, so in some of the programs that we work with on Jim's staff is, they'll is, uh, they'll come pick up inmates to go actually work in certain areas and, and do certain things that they're cross-deputized to, uh, also supervise inmates.
So we do utilize that manpower occasionally, yeah.
So your, your employees are going to be safe when they're going there and they're focused, they're cleaning, scrubbing the toilet, they're not worried about anyone coming in behind them?
Yeah, most of the areas are, um, they shouldn't be.
Isolated.
Isolated with any inmates, uh.
So we still are going to use the inmate population to clean the inmate areas. These, this is specific to the staffing areas. So when you talk about like the control room where they run all the doors, well, we don't want to bring inmates into those areas, but there's staff restrooms in those areas. And so in those areas, staff have been going in and cleaning those areas and not bringing inmates in because if you let an inmate into those areas, it's a secure area where they can jump in there and, you know, press a button, a bunch of buttons.
So the bathrooms that the inmates racks are going to use, they're cleaning their own?
Yes, the, the.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought.
This is specific to staff areas.
Okay, I thought that you were asking for this coming to clean.
No, yeah, sorry about that. No, the, the inmate areas, the inmates will continue to, uh, clean themselves.
Yeah, no, then of course, um, cleaning of, because I look at that just like our bathrooms here.
Right.
So why wouldn't, yeah, why wouldn't you have some services come in?
Yeah, we historically haven't. We've just done it ourselves. Either staff does it or in some of those areas that you can bring an inmate in for like a, like a lunch break room.
I understood it wrong, okay. You're probably looking, no wonder you were looking at me crazy in the podium. Okay, sorry, Sheriff.
I didn't want to go back and tell the detention's deputy association that it's too much of a value once we clean the bathrooms, but.
Oh, yeah, I didn't.
I've finished boot camp a stage a lot since you were there as well, though. You were underpaid in boot camp, I tell, I can tell you that right now.
And I'll tell you what, when going back to the car divin' program.
Yeah.
Man, I've had a two or three times, uh, the experience and you could eat food off the engines when your folks are done. And anyone who hasn't taken advantage of their service, um, uh, you're probably paying triple out in public for what you get, uh, when you leave your car there. They do amazing, five stars, Sheriff.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll pass that back to them. Thank you. Okay, moving on to my next one. I believe the coroner's office is next. So within the coroner's office, let me just look and see what that dollar amount is. $35,000 to the Kings County Sheriff's Office Coroner Division for a 40-foot storage container on a concrete foundation. And then also in addition to that, some of those, uh, funds are going to be used for digital conversion of some of the coroner files to free up workspace in the office. So one of the things, the directive I've given my staff is let's make sure we're using technology and digitization as much as possible. But one of the things that we learned during this pandemic is obviously, as your board's aware, um, we did see an increase in COVID-related deaths, um, over the course of the pandemic. And as your sheriff, but also your coroner and your public administrator, we have certain duties, um, that we have to fulfill. And that includes taking in properties. Sometimes it's actual houses, cars, artifacts and things like that. And so we, we started to run into a storage situation. Some of the storage situations are long-term while they're going through probate court. Some of them are short-term where it's just a matter of the review of, of wills or, or last, you know, legal documents, things like that. So, um, this project would allow for a Conex box to be built on the backside of the new morgue facility where we have some open space to have a storage for those types of things while we're holding them, either for probate or for family members to pick up or for the court process to work out to see, you know, where those items are going. And then obviously some long-term, as the coroner, that we do have, um, certain documents that we're required to keep for a lifetime. There's no destruction mechanism on those. And so we want to make sure we have a place to preserve those, those items. Do I have one more?
That's it.
Okay.
He wants, he wants one more. Go ahead, Sheriff. Freestyle one. I owe you one.
And the last project is from Kings County Fire Department.
Yeah, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Sorry if I, sorry if I'm nervous. I thought Anthony Walecki was going to go down and I was actually going to have to work. We used to work at, uh, Popolo's Pizza together, so known him a long time. Uh, I'm here before you today to request the $96,281 for, um, automatic vehicle locators for the first-out equipment of the Kings County Fire Department. Uh, this is a much-needed project that has, uh, hasn't happened in our department yet. And we're very, um, hopeful to be able to do this. And it, uh, benefits two people greatly, the citizens first. Uh, this gives, puts our first foot forward when a call comes in and then it really benefits our dispatch center. So I got, I brought in Brooks to talk a little bit about that in our system. So, Brooks, how our system works.
I think I'm as nervous as. Good morning, I'm Brooks, feeling with the Kings County Dispatch. We use the automatic vehicle locators on our computer systems now to accurately identify where law enforcement is in our system that we have on, uh, in our system. And so we can tell when a call comes in who will be the closest unit. This system that the fire department is working on is the same kind of thing, but it will tell us which fire units are closest to calls that come in. So it's a very special tool and it's, uh, wonderful for dispatch to have a visual representation on a map to actually see and have the commuter, computer recommend those units to be faster responding to these emergencies as they come in.
Apparently the system we have is based upon a GPS location of the station. So like Station 4, example, if they go down to Corcoran for a call when they're finished and they go available and a call comes in and Station 4's, uh, area, it'll actually recommend it in that Station 4 because in the system they're available because it's using the GPS location of this, of the station. So it frees, it'll free up a lot of radio traffic, it'll get the closest units there. And, uh, talking with Brooks over the last couple of days about this program, OES is actually, um, trying to come up with a program statewide that all the different systems will feed into so that we can do some sharing between mutual aids and other departments. And most of the departments already have the AVL feature. We're one of the few that don't. So this is going to step us forward to be able to get into this and provide a better service for our citizens. So if there's any more questions, I can answer those.
But Valley, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. Does it, uh, do you already have the ability to GPS the American ambulance?
That, that's going to be a different supervisor, Valley. American ambulance is a private, uh, company.
Not.
In Fresno County, uh, they do cross-share their information because, um, they, um, the, the American ambulance is actually starting to dispatch for a lot of the fire agencies. So they're putting fire trucks and ambulances on there. And I want to be clear on this, this is just to start the program, to put the, the device in the, in the rig to start the process so that dispatch can see us. If we wanted to go to another, uh, level, it would cost more money to put the devices in the rig so that we can see each other. This first phase is just to get dispatch to be able to see us, to dispatch closest unit. But, uh, once this system's, um, put in and Chief Lynch went with a, a little more expensive system, that we'll be able to expand in the future. Uh, we've been working with Anthony and IT and, and a couple of the other staff to make sure that we get the right stuff installed so that if we decide in the future to, to add to it and, and expand that we're, we have the right systems in place. I don't know, did I answer your question?
No, no, you did. I was just wondering what the cost would be for the, uh, American ambulance vehicles if we, if we put that in to be able to monitor them for the citizens, right? And then if that's something that works, then moving forward into whoever gets the ambulance contract that, um, we maybe we possibly ask them or require them to cover the cost of that because, um, I might, I mean, you would know better than me, but would that be a good feature for, for us to have to know where the nearest ambulances are as well?
Um, I, I actually think that Brooks would be able to speak to that. I just know the workload in the, in the dispatch center is pretty high. This is going to help, uh, eliminate some of it.
Got it.
Um, and make their operation more efficient. I think adding other entities along for us to track, whether it's, uh, at the fireside or the sheriff's side through the dispatch centers, ask them to do work that they're, they're already overworked, uh, employees already.
Got it.
I don't think, I think maybe with, and I just attended the ambulance commission, that, that we have that kind of stuff already in place, the oversight to watch their, uh, response times and stuff. And they already are calling on the phone and, and they're getting updates when, when we ask them. I, I don't know if, I think it's just adding, it's making the water a little more muddier if we're starting to watch everybody.
That's not my attention. What's the cost today to, uh, versus a rising cost? What's the cost today to get that upgrade that you were talking about to where you guys could see each other?
Um, I, I don't know, we haven't been researching that. I, I personally haven't been involved with this project. Uh, Chief Lynch has been, um, been running this project and, uh, he's on vacation. So, um, I got to present it today. So I can get back to you with those numbers, um, to get that second phase going in. And I don't know if IT, we didn't look that far with your staff. It, it's, it's a little more, uh, complex of a problem, uh, getting, we, we've tried in the past and, and the systems we bought didn't work out for us.
What's the number one benefit to you guys being able to see each other?
Um, well, that's kind of, uh, we can see each other right now. Um, we're using an app called Active 911. So, and when we get a call, the, the calls are pushed to our phones. And if you're, um, reviewing the calls on your phones, um, an icon will pop up. As a battalion chief, I will, um, when I'm responding to a call, I will pull it up to see where they are. It's just a matter of fact whether the user is using their phone or not. Um, it is beneficial when we have converging intersections, but we also use the radios to do that because we can see each other most of the time. Um, but with us being a rural department and being so spread out, those opportunities aren't as much as like in a bigger city where you have a lot more population density and, um, converging intersections. So, um, we do kind of have the opportunity with the app that we use. It's just you have to have your app out on your phone and be using that. So, um, I think for the administration staff, it's probably the best because then we can see where our rigs are and how much farther out they are when we're in a critical, critical time of need. I, I can do some research into those numbers, sir, and get that back to you.
I would think so, before we run out of ARPA funds.
Okay, well, I'll have those for you in pretty soon then.
Thank you. And then Josh, uh, how about the automatic aids with the City Handford Volunteer, uh, Lamar and with the, uh, Lamar Nebelair Station? Are we going to be able to deploy that same technology?
Yeah, so that's kind of what Brooks and I were talking about. I think with OES, uh, putting together and the state building the program, it's probably better if we just sit back and let them do that because if, uh, they, we use Spillman, so if, if it's Spillman-based, it might be easier. I'm not a, really an expert on this, but I, I just know that, uh, the state's trying to make an all-in-companies pro, uh, encompassing program to where they can take in any type of system that's being used and converge it all into one system. So, um, we, we just talked about this yesterday, we're going to reach out and do that. I know it's, it's possible because Fresno County, Fresno City, uh, Selma, Kingsburg, all the Fresno County, they're all merged onto one and they can see each other on, on the rigs and the different dispatch centers. And it actually helps the automatic aid and the mutual aid, it kind of frees it up a little more to where we're going to be doing more mutual aid with our partners because they can see, um, Fresno is very interested to try to get us on their side because a lot of times they'll dispatch us into Leighton and they don't know that our rigs covering our Mona. So once GPS is done, then they'll see that and they'll, and they'll leave us alone, so.
Yeah, sometimes all the way up to Corothers.
Yes.
So, yeah.
It's truly a benefit for not only the citizens of the county once we get integrated in all the other systems for all of our mutual aids because they'll, the days of which department you work for and where the call is, it's just going to be the closest fire engine will get dispatched to the call. No, no, we'll figure it out later, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, this concludes the presentation from the ARPA committee. For the fiscal impact in fiscal year 2122 adopted budget, the board added $2,35,126 to be used for, um, in public health for combating COVID-19. Since the receipt of those ARPA funds, public health has received various funding sources from the same purpose through federal and state funds alleviating the use of the original $2 million budgeted last year. To date, public health has only used $810,087 and is requesting to return the amount of $1,225,039 back to the American Rescue Plan Trust. If the board approves the proposed recommendation, the remaining balance of the ARPA funds, including the 1.2 million addition from public health, would be $3,222,968. At this time, we are requesting to amend the recommendation to administratively apply the ARPA funds to the budget. This request does, um, require a change to the current budget. And since we are adding the positions, they need to be formally added into the budget. So at this time, we request to authorize the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $2,027,769 for projects recommended by the ARPA committee. Allocate 1.0 janitor supervisor, FTE 1.0 janitor supervisor and 1.0 janitor to Budget 925700 in building maintenance and adopt the budget change for fifth vote is required.
Very good, thank you. Um, discussion? Questions?
Where's Oprah?
Huh?
Where's Oprah?
You get a hundred, you get a million. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to, first of all, uh, make the motion as presented, uh, by Kira. And then, um, there's a good piece of history for you, Catherine. The first time a department head has given money back to the board over a million dollars. So make sure, uh, let's handwrite it into that big ledger right there. So, um, other than that, I just want to say it's good work on the ARPA committee, just the whole rounding of everything that happened from money to small businesses to digital advertising for small businesses to, uh, money for cemetery districts, um, improvements here at the county. So it's good work all, all around today. And then I, I, I also just want to, um, uh, give a thank you and, and kudos to Catherine and, and the clerks and staff. Uh, Catherine, I know this, uh, preservation project is very important too. You've talked about it for a long time. I do remember when I got here in, um, January of '09 seeing you guys in the back scanning in microfiche and I was wondering what the hell was going on with that and seeing the microfiche machine still there. Um, and also, uh, I know you've always spoke about the need to remodel in here. And, um, so I think that's going to be a good, uh, tribute to your time here at the county as well. And I very seriously, Mr. Chairman, mean this when I say I hope there's money in the budget. If not, maybe they can come back. But I think that, um, when you're undertaking a, a project like this for the community and for later down the road for people in our community to know what took place, maybe a nice, um, commemorative plaque, either on the outside or the inside that says, um, you know, who was here and especially Catherine's, uh, clerk of the board on a nice bronze, uh, plaque somewhere in here as well to commemorate what took place, uh, how these chambers came to be the way they are and the history, part of the history of these, uh, chambers. Thank you, Catherine.
Is that a motion?
As much as.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I kind of got lost myself.
Play the tape back.
We don't have that technology yet.
I, I'll second that, uh, as well, Mr. Mo, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, and, uh, you know, I just want to say that I, I, I'd never forget when I walked and I asked Catherine, I said, "What are all those things over there?" It's like, that's the history of Kings County. Like, and it sent a chill through my, my bones. It's like, holy cow, all the history of Kings County sitting right there. It's one fire away from being gone. And, uh, you know, I mean, it just, just sat with me the whole time and, and I'm glad to see that, uh, we're accomplishing this task and, and, uh, and, uh, getting her done, so. With that.
Very good. Moved by Valley, seconded by Peterson. Uh, additional discussion? Well, clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. But the record show that item stands approved, four in favor, uh, one absent. Thank you very much.
Sheriff, I'll come through Thursday and I'll give your bathrooms to give Marine Corps scrubbing.
Dude, now that's on the record.
Yeah, Sheriff, uh, can you, uh, distribute that camera?
Hey, we'll, we'll go Facebook Live.
The, uh, next item also comes from administration regarding, uh, consider approving the Board of Supervisors' response to the grand jury report. Matthew?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyad, Kings County Administration. Um, so the 2020-2021 grand jury, um, had their initial investigation on the pedestrian crossing there in Kettleman City at, uh, General Petroleum Avenue and State Route 41. Um, and upon those initial findings in that initial report,[1778.74] um, they did identify, um, evidence supporting, uh, needed improvements for pedestrian crossing at the intersection. Um, they identified lack of warning signage and actually proposed, uh, the construction of a bridge to improve, um, pedestrian, uh, crossing at that intersection there. So, um, the current grand jury actually, um, did a follow-up to that initial investigation, um, just to kind of see the status, um, of those initial findings and recommendations. And, uh, by doing that, they, uh, conducted several interviews, uh, one with the county supervisor, one with the director of public works, one with the superintendent of Reef Sunset School District, one with a member of the Assembly Ethics Committee, and also one with Caltrans. And so, um, the follow-up investigation, uh, they actually came to, um, identify four new findings and recommendations, um, of which your board is, um, was a required respondent to that, uh, report. So before you this morning is a general response, um, for, from the board for your consideration and approval. Uh, real quick, I need to clarify and amend some things that were in the agenda item and the actual, um, draft response to the board. There was a typo. The California Budget Act of 2022 is not SB 179, it's AB 179. So my apologies for that. Um, that's the actual bill that allocates the, uh, $6 million, um, in the, um, in the state budget for this project specifically. Um, and with that, um, in the agenda item and the actual, uh, response itself, um, it mentions that the, uh, bill, AB 179, has not yet been passed, um, as of today. And as of September 6th, I believe, was the official date. It was signed by the governor and has been passed and formally allocated. So at the time when this was originally crafted and given the, you know, how we had to submit this in, uh, in advance, you know, so many weeks, at that particular time, it was not yet, um, public knowledge that it had been finalized. So, um, just wanted to bring those two things to your attention. I can get that amended, um, in the, um, response accordingly. So with that, that concludes my presentation for this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. To where the valley?
Yeah, thank you, sure. Uh, thank you guys for being so ahead. I know you guys are now weeks ahead when you are preparing this. So the fact that, um, the letter to, uh, the Honorable, uh, Judge Burns, uh, had the, uh, the language that said we were waiting, uh, um, on an accident to take place. And that was relative to the fact that, hey, look, this $6 million was passed a couple of weeks ago, but the governor hasn't signed it yet, so let's not count our chickens before they're hatched. So, um, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, should, do we need to recommend the language on, on what for them to change or just allow them the, uh, the room to change accordingly?
I was just going to give them the room to change accordingly.
Okay.
To update and to current conditions.
Okay, okay, thank you. And just along the lines of, um, that, uh, the county now has, uh, a total of $8 million in state funds to build this bridge. And that staff estimates the bridge, has estimated the cost of the bridge between $5 to $7 million. Okay, so, um, uh, with, with that, thanks for taking the time, uh, to draft this, uh, response, uh, letter there and, and to, uh, put that on the record. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Is this an action, Matt? Motion?
Uh, I, I was waiting for any, any comments. I'm happy to make the motion. Thanks, you, uh, uh, motion to, uh, approve what the amendment to the, uh, letter to the, uh, Honorable Judge Burns. Thank you.
Second? That was a second?
Yes, sir.
Moved by Valley, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions or comments? Chair, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. But the record show four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. The next item is approval of the master agreement with Ernst &amp; Young to audit accounting of the California Department of Water Resources. Matthew, you want to continue?
Yes, sure. Um, so for many, many years, Ernst &amp; Young has acted as an independent auditor of, um, the Department of Water Resources and in particular their state water project, um, facilities and all of their financial and accounting records. And so it, there have been tasked with basically ensuring that DWR is, um, doing everything in regards to the state water project that is actually outlined in the contractual obligations. Um, and so this has been done through several, you know, reoccurring five-year, um, service agreements. And it's several state water project contractors that sign on to this, uh, which, uh, we are one of the, uh, state water project, uh, contractors. And so, um, we're signing on this agreement with several other state water project contractors um, to ensure that the charges that DWR is, uh, charging us for and our water users for are in fact true and accurate and, um, true to the contractual, uh, requirements, um, of the state water project. So each year of this five-year term, uh, Ernst &amp; Young will actually submit a statement of work to us. And through that statement of work, they basically tell us everything that they're going to be auditing and looking into for that particular year. So, um, along with the five-year master services agreement this morning, the current, um, statement of work for the fiscal year, the current fiscal year that we're in, 2022, 2023, um, the auditing records, um, that state, uh, Ernst &amp; Young will be looking into, um, they're going to be looking at, um, and auditing the statement of charges testing, delta water charges, alpha allocation cycles, um, system power costs, debt service procedures, um, and a couple of other, um, items there for the state water project. And so with that, um, the county's cost of this first year, um, of this statement of work is going to range from anywhere of about $3,100 to just shy of $4,000. And why there's a range is because, uh, with this being a multi-agency effort, uh, you know, economies of scale are at work. So the more state water project contractors that are on board, the, the less each member has to pay because they're spread, uh, across multiple agencies. So the fewer that sign on, then that's more burdened that each of the, uh, contractors that signed on will have to, uh, to bear. So, uh, but that is our range, um, of this particular first year. And although those are outlined as our obligations as far as payment goes, these are reimbursed through payment from our water users, um, in our contract service area. And that is, um, all administered and handled, um, by the wonderful folks there at the Tillery Lake Basin Water Storage District that actually handles our state water project contract for us. Um, and so with that, uh, it is a retro agreement this morning. Um, as you'll see, the term of the agreement starts July 1st, 2022. And that is the date in which Ernst &amp; Young actually emailed the agreement to us. So, uh, as with all of the agreements, you know, we put them through a, well, not we, but the wonderful folks at the county council's office put it through a, uh, a rigorous review. And, uh, from that review, there were several pieces of language and several clauses and items in there that, uh, didn't apply to the county and some that, uh, were not conducive to the county's interests. So, um, it created a lot of back and forth between the county and Ernst &amp; Young because we had to not only review on our side, but propose edits to such a multi-agency agreement. And then Ernst &amp; Young had to, A, assess, um, if those changes would affect any of the other, uh, contractors that have signed on and then also run that through their council on their side. So it was a pretty lengthy process and it, it, it took, you know, a few months to kind of, um, land and, uh, get everybody's interests taken care of, um, without disrupting, um, the needs of the other contractors and the services, um, of the actual, uh, agreement. So, um, with that, that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Matthew. Questions, comments, or concerns? Move for adoption.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Valley. Thank you very much. Um, additional discussion? Chair, seeing none, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. The record show, uh, five in favor, uh, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Matthew, you want to continue and talk about the organic waste recycling program?
Thank you. So, um, the state passed, um, the Senate Bill 1383 regulations in 2016 um, as their response to addressing the climate crisis. And so they're claiming that, uh, the greenhouse gases caused by human-like activity are causing climate change. And so the regulations and enforcement for compliance for all of the jurisdictions for SB 1383 went into effect of January 1st of this year. And so the requirements are that, uh, all waste now needs to be, um, separated and categorized in three primary categories. Um, recycling, which is traditionally your blue can, composting is your green can, and then your, uh, regular landfill, which is your black and/or gray can. And so one of the big changes, uh, of, that this bill actually, um, required was all of your, uh, food scraps now had to be composted in with your green waste, all of your yard trimmings and stuff like that. So no longer you're allowed to scrape off your dinner plate into the regular landfill. You know, they, they want you to compost that into the green. Um, and then another big change, uh, that this bill required is that, uh, now some commercial facilities, depending on their size and scope of operation, will now have to recycle their, um, unused food that is still able to be used, um, to be actually repurposed back into the community. So, um, our responsibility for compliance and, um, of all of the regulations in SB 1383 fall, um, within the unincorporated areas that fall outside of the boundary of any community service district. So all of the individual cities and all of the community service districts, they will be responsible for, um, all of these regulations and enforcement and compliance, all on their own. So, um, that's who we're responsible for. We did get several census tract, um, exemptions for census tracts that were, um, that met the criteria of having less than 75 people per square mile. So that left us with roughly 2,600 generators that we're responsible for as the county. And they're mainly concentrated in the areas of Grangefville, um, the fringe of Lemoore, and then the fringe of Corcoran. So with that, on May 10th of this year, I brought a study session to your board to go over all of the requirements and the potential implementation models of, uh, SB 1383, um, which I outlined the free market model versus the, um, franchise model. And, uh, your board's direction was to implement all of these requirements via the free market model, giving, uh, the generators and your constituents free choice of how they wish to comply with this state mandate. So with that, uh, staff worked towards implementing as such under the free market, um, implementation model. And, and with that, we did conduct three community workshops. Um, we did one on August 23rd at Central Union School District, one the next day on the 24th at Pioneer Union Elementary School, and then the last one on August 25th in, uh, at the city of Corcoran in their Corcoran, or, excuse me, in their city council chambers to basically, uh, notify and educate, um, the public of how this, um, state mandated bill will impact them and what the county's responsibilities are. So with that, part of the requirements and, uh, county responsibilities is to, uh, craft an ordinance to comply with all of these regulations accordingly. And so, um, the wonderful folks at the county coun, county council's office, um, crafted the ordinance, um, as it fits with the regulations, um, following the free market model, uh, via your board's direction. And so we did get some comments from one of our haulers, um, Mid Valley Disposal. They had, um, a couple of, uh, comments on there. So on section 13-8 in the definitions, definition number 17 of compostable plastics, they actually, uh, proposed to delete this, um, definition. In the same section, definition number 61, organic waste, they actually, um, proposed to remove the words organic textiles and carpet. And then, uh, another section, section 13-37, which outlines the responsibility of solid waste collection licensees. Um, section one, item H there, the annual financial report, they proposed to delete that entire section. And then in section 13-40, the delinquent accounts and liens, um, they proposed to change the due date from 30 days to 60 days. And so once a account is, uh, identified as being delinquent, uh, you know, after three months of not paying your service bill, you're considered delinquent. And at that point, the, uh, upon identification of such a delinquent account, the county will send out, um, notice to that property owner saying, "Hey, you are delinquent on, uh, this particular account." The way it's currently written, that, uh, person has 30 days to submit payment. Um, but Mid Valley is proposing to lengthen that to 60 days. And then we did receive, um, some general comments from Kings Waste and Recycling Authority, um, who is our, uh, wonderful JPA there. Um, they suggest adding and/or modifying language to how we reference the blue can. Um, they are proposing to remove the word organic from the definition and keep more, uh, a traditional definition of the blue can. And so, uh, what, what they mean is the way the regulations are outlined right now, um, the, the word organics, um, the way the definitions are written can technically, depending on the state of that particular organic material, it can either be in the blue can or the green can. But KWRA, uh, raised a good point in the fact that, um, it could be confusing to a lot of the generators, um, as to what can go into the blue and what can go into the green. And so they, they want to just, you know, keep with the traditional, um, definitions and understanding of what goes in the blue and what goes into the green can because they're, they're afraid that, uh, the way it's currently written, that it could actually cause increased contamination in their, uh, composting contract with, uh, Ketchergen Farms. And so they, they want to, you know, keep that, keep those diversion rates, um, at a particular level. And they, they, they don't want to, um, you know, start increasing their, uh, contaminated loads and, uh, and potentially, you know, disrupt the services within that contract. So those were the comments that we received from, uh, Mid Valley Disposal and Kings Waste and Recycling Authority. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Questions, comments, concerns?
Are you, then, Mr. Chairman, are you fine with the, uh, changes to, uh, your language? They, they all work for you?
So I, I did send the, uh, changes to county council's office. And the, on section 13-8 in the definitions, we are fine with deleting definition number 17, the compostable plastics. And in section 13-37 of the responsibility of solid waste, solid waste collection licensees, we are fine with deleting, um, item 1H, the annual financial report. Um, so those are the two changes that we are, uh, fine with making. Um, I don't, I, I do have Cindy here if she wants to speak a little to, um, maybe some of KWRA's, um, suggestions or edits. I, I think they kind of fall along the lines of what Mid Valley was after in regards to compostable plastics and stuff like that.
Just as long, as long as it works for you, so we can make the motion to include the amendment, right? Because it's not in the language currently.
Correct, yeah. What, what you have this morning is the initial ordinance drafted totally, you know, uh, you know, in line with regulations. The proposed amendments here would be to kind of, uh, modify those a little bit to kind of match our specific situation, our infrastructure with our current haulers and KWRA and things like that, so.
There'll be a second reading? Are you coming back?
Yeah, there'll be a second reading next week.
Okay.
Um, it, well, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, let, let me speak to that. Um, I think it was last Friday when some of these comments were submitted and my office endeavored two tasks. One is to see if procedurally we could amend, you know, these. The other was to see if substantively we could amend these. Your board can't amend these at this first reading, prior to the reading. It can, it can say, "I instruct these changes." However, that, not all of the requested amended substantive amendments can be made because we can't do less than what the regulations require. So we identified that there were a couple, as Matt has ident, has presented, that can be legally amended and still have the ordinance, um, sufficient. Um, and those ones are the compostable plastics, removing that definition, and, uh, the comment regarding the annual financial reports. So if your board wants to incorporate those, um, comments and, and strike those portions of the ordinance, it has the ability to do that without affecting the legality of the ordinance. Cindy, did you have further comments on any of that? Cindy is our substantive expert on AB 1383, so I'm going to let her add any additional comments that she may have.
Days, um, if they want to lengthen, um, if they don't pay for days, their delinquency. And so if they want to give them a cure period, a lengthen it from 30 to 60 days, that's fine. We're trying that, I think that's fine. Um, the other request is they wanted to remove, um, organic textiles and carpets from, um, definition of organic, we cannot do that. And that, what that means is wool carpets, cotton clothing, that kind of thing. Anything that is, um, derived from a living being, then you can go in there. And so. from a living being than being going there. And so what KWRA wanted, I think it's fine too. The blue can is just your traditional recyclables and anything that is food scraps, green waste, that kind of thing. Only that goes into the green, rather than putting, you can put timber and that kind of, you can put timber and stuff into the green now, but I think it's fine to leave it as it is and just add, adding more stuff. Does that make sense?
The states always changing the definitions. Is there any way that we can fix this ordinance to where it relates back to state definitions?
Back to what the, as we.
Correct.
We can add, talk with you about this, we can probably add something that the definitions will form to.
Yeah, because that was lacking in the ordinance. And with the continual changing environment in Sacramento, you know, this document could be out of, out of step real quick. And so, you know, I think if we can tie it to some other kind of state regulation so we don't have to amend it all the time.
I do know some of those, this is something that Cindy and I did discuss, and many of the definitions that we have in here did say or otherwise as defined by state law. So it would, at least on some of those definitions, and I believe those are the ones that were specifically defined by statute, would defer to state law. We could do it a little bit more globally, if that's what your recommendation is.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Barbe, did you have an opportunity to review? And is there anything else you want to add or subtract or add on behalf of King's Waste and Recycling?
Good morning, Chairman, and good morning, Board. Parveen Sandhu from KWRA. I did have a chance to review the ordinance, and my recommendations were to keep the blue can traditional. The fear is that right now, as SB 1383 states, that we are able to put in, let's say, food-soiled paper into the green waste, which is a mandate of SB 1383, and that is fine. But then there's a confusion, let's say, for pizza boxes. Those are cardboard. So if we start identifying specific waste streams or types, that's going to confuse consumers even more. And then so they're going to start putting their Amazon boxes into the green waste, which is, they're not compostable because they are made differently. So anything that is food-soiled and compostable can go into the green can. But if we get down and saying, okay, your, for example, your tied, you know, container, or your traditionally, you know, number two, three, four, or five, that is not true anymore because those, those waste streams are now market-driven. So if there's not a market for number five, six, and seven, you know, those aren't considered recyclable today, but maybe in three weeks they are. So I think to keep it vague and then to add language as, you know, state mandates update, that would be a good idea. So that way you're not having to come back and revise your ordinance many, many times.
And I always thought that the blue can should be for dry materials only and not soiled or wet.
Correct. So we do have diversion thresholds that we need to meet, and we are meeting those. We're at 60% diversion with Mid Valley Recycling for our recyclables. And then we do have a green waste contract with Ketchergen Farms, and that is further extended to include food waste. So we don't want to have mass amounts of contamination in both contracts because that lowers the whole JPA's, so the whole community's diversion rates, which is going to create more problems with CalRecycle.
Food scraps can be, that can be excluded, that they cannot go into.
Correct. Food scraps go into the green waste can. Correct. It can go into the green can.
Yeah. I just want the language as simple as it can be because people get confused over vinyl, you know, garden hoses or PVC. They think it's recyclable, and it's not.
I guess my point was, I don't know if I made it correctly, food scraps can exclude those from going into the blue can.
Correct.
Correct. They are meant to go into the green can because it's compostable.
Yes.
Yeah. And you remove that language?
I will remove it. I will, I have, I will remove it, but I will make sure that it is explicitly not food soil.
Correct. And anything with moisture? Yeah. So that, I think the public might understand that a little bit better. Oil or moisture, anything with moisture cannot be put in the blue can. Blue can is only for dry goods. And then hopefully we'll stay with the more simple recycled in the blue can market. Thank you, Parveen.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a white zone still, the loading zone?
Matthew, you want to close?
Yeah, that actually concludes my presentation. So if you guys have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Questions, comments, or concerns?
I'll just pay my fine now. I'll be the first one to get busted.
Cash flow is always appreciated.
I would like us to make sure we clearly understand what it is we are striking and what it is we are adding to the language of the ordinance because today is the first reading. And in any changes that we make after the first reading, if they're substantive changes, would require reintroduction for another first reading. So if we can clearly identify those today, then we will be able to continue with the first reading today. But any changes that we can't clearly identify would have to be delayed and brought back for a first reading.
The removal of food waste into the blue can, for sure. All food waste goes to the green can. Even though we can't redefine organic materials, I think it needs to be tighter language to reflect the actions of the state. And I don't know how you want to do that at all. I think, I think there are some vague references, but I think it needs to be more global so that it understands and not just in each section. And then I don't know how you'd incorporate it into the, into the ordinance, but there are existing contracts from King's Waste and Recycling and the cities that I would not like to infringe upon. So some kind of connection to King's Waste and Recycling, I think, would be appropriate if we could interject that somewhere. Even though this is a county ordinance, we are a member of the joint powers agreement of King's Waste and Recycling that also incorporates in the cities. So I think it kind of makes sense to have them as a strategic partner in the formation of this ordinance. You want to just take this off the agenda for today and redo it?
I am thinking that it doesn't sound like we're going to be able to have an adequate first reading today, that we're going to have to bring it back for a first reading another time.
And that'll give Matthew a little bit more time because he's going to have to read 35 pages worth of.
That's a lot.
You know, yeah, because I'm not sure the board's going to waive the reading. You're going to have to read it, buddy. So.
I practiced today with all the agenda items.
Yeah, yeah. So 37, yeah, 37 pages, you know, with a little bit of practice, you can probably do it. And.
That's it.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Are there?
Ordinance directs that recycling is a designated transfer fee.
Correct. The existing contracts that the county has by extension of King's Waste and Recycling are for the separation of the blue can and not so much the green can. It just technically goes in for composting, right, Parveen? So I think, I just want to make sure that we don't increase the contamination of that green waste or the blue can materials that go to.
So technically, it's of any recyclable material. At that time, it was technically blue can. But now, since the word recycling has expanded to so many different things, it would also encompass the green can. So it's pretty much all materials collected within Kings County and its, JPA members of the cities and the unincorporated areas.
But, correct me, and I, and I should know this, and I don't, cotton material into the composting?
Right now, I would say no.
I know. That's what I'm kind of thinking, but that is organic. There are so many blends too.
There are so many blends.
Nylons and the rayons come in.
But it just depends on the type of composting that is happening. Right now, it's just open row. So that's probably going to take longer to break down. And once that compost is ready, it's going to need to be fished out. And that is another extra step. So another, again, another extra cost, which that material comes out as residue or residual, which is going to be trash and landfillled. So we're just on the cusp of this and refining composting procedures. So I, at this time, I would say no.
The one thing that I want to point out is that we won't be able to draft an ordinance that's less than what the law requires. And we can look into the, you know, the cotton as a compostable, but we can't legitimately, county council can't draft an ordinance that is going to be less than what the law requires and have it a defensible ordinance. And so we'll have to consult and see how that would impact contracts or where it would impact contracts, knowing that your desire is not to do that. But we do have to draft and compliance with the regulations.
Yeah. The problem with the regulations from the state is they don't take into account the nylon blends and rayons and all of the other inorganic materials that you have interrelated with organic compounds. And so it's, I always try to err on the side of caution, but there are very few cotton products anymore that doesn't have a blend. So I think. Correct.
Fiber, yeah, fiber, so we're not allowed to litter anything with the fiber, but I see your concern because everything has fiber or something in it.
Correct. And it dyes, it has, you know, plastics and rubbers and everything else. So there's a lot of other material. There's very few items that are just cotton, towels, blankets, sheets.
Right. We don't want to be seeing just somebody's donateable items ending up in the green can because that's what's probably going to happen.
Correct. Yeah. And yeah, I know it's an uphill battle for you because the state has put us into this position, but the definition the state has is very difficult to adhere to.
Well, if we're going to, if we're going to get this deep in, then I think that if we're using blended cotton, we should send the cotton produced outside the US back to the country that it came from.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion, maybe the state mandated language can be added in there, but education will be ongoing of what can be because as processes are changing, and as we know, they're always ever-changing, that we can re-educate the public of, okay, you can put this in now, you can't put this in now. As over the last 30 years, it's dramatically changed of what's recyclable and what's not considered recyclable.
Yeah. And then if they want to separate out the cannabis? All right. So you're going to work on it, write it up?
Yes.
Change it up?
We will.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You want to switch over to 11 o'clock since we're late, or you want to wrap up this meeting, Catherine? All we have is board member announcements. Yeah. All right. That concludes all of today's agenda items. We're going to now move to board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, attended the RCRC, Rural Counties of California, Annual Meeting. We had thought about possibly joining as a member a few years back, but due to financial considerations, we never did join. I think there's still an interest to be a member. You know, when you look at the 39 counties that they represent, they're all rural counties. And while CSAC does a great job at representing all 58 counties, the ability to be light on your feet and address the issues of rural counties is quite different than representing all of the 58 counties. And so, you know, this will be something that the board can decide at, you know, a later date that'll come before you. But, you know, the group, the tenor of the discussions, I think, fits our county very well. And if there's an opportunity to become a member, I would encourage us to do so. Also, you know, have the opportunity to introduce Ed to a lot of folks that he hadn't met yet and get a feel for, you know, the counterparts that might be working with. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Corcoran Sadaf, the prison there. They called on Thursday morning with their first donation, Operation Gobble, $8,064.52. And so that's a good start to getting the budget built up. And again, I'm calling in looking to buy some turkeys early, make sure we have some there. I want to thank Dominic yesterday for being very fast to help me out. I called him in regards to, even though I felt it wasn't our jurisdiction, but the section of Highway 41 where the accident took place and the families from Kettlemann suffered loss. I just asked Dominic if he would just give me just a general overview of that section and if there's anything that, you know, would be within ours jurisdiction. I thought it'd take him a week, but he called a couple hours later and just gave me an overview. And I owe some folks in Kettlemann some information back to them. And that's about it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Supervisor Fagundis?
All I had was seniors in the park, and I'll let you elaborate on that, being you with the back.
I can, not me. Kathy was running that project. Not me. I don't.
Give you credit here in front of everybody.
And she's not here, and I appreciate that. But yeah.
When I see her, I'll tell her she was. Thank her for.
Exactly. And she appreciates that very much. For me, the special meeting of KCAG, we approved the 2022 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Impact Reports. Those are moving along and incorporated with the Federal Transportation Program Goals and Objectives. So we have wrapped up our obligations in those two areas. CalViva Finance and Regional Health Board meetings enrollment stands at 410,000 souls, continues to increase because with the current public health item, you can't disenroll individuals. So our realistic number is probably in the 360,000 range, but we're carrying those extra 50,000 people. It's good for the budget. It's good for everything else. But one of these days when the public health emergency is lifted and the disenrollment happens, you know, and they will come off on their anniversary date. So it's not going to impact us at one time, but it will impact us sometime in the future. The good news is CalViva was able to keep the Fresno-Kings-Madera region for five more years under the State Department of Health Services. The challenging news is, is that Anthem Blue Cross is appealing that award, and they were also one of the competing for that, for that service. The board was able to review the health standards of the Shreve County region. Eight areas need improvement of a list of 32 different areas. Fresno and Kings need the most improvement, and Madera was performing very well. I think many of those reporting standards are on reporting itself and not necessarily that we're not doing the job. And so staff was tasked with the ability to go out and make sure that that, all of that information's being collected timely and in the right location. Lemoore High School Football Team was able to announce the game on Thursday. Senior Day in the Park, as Supervisor Fagundis talked about, certainly want to thank him, John Martin, Bill Lynch, Jim Kilner, Keith Fagundis, Rhonda, and Ron Mann, Rusty Robinson, thank you very much, and my wife Kathy, as well as Dave Morris, and then the entire Parks crew. Even Dominic Taborzki showed up, and I was very glad to see him moving tables and helping out the Commission on Aging, who is celebrating over 50 years of service to Kings County. I would like to, at some point, get with Dominic and put a bench or something out here to commemorate that 50-year relationship in Kings County. Lemoore Raceway held their races. Almost 50 cars competed. Only one more race on October 1st. The Budweiser Grand Prix is a double-point race to wrap up the regular season. And then the Cal Cup races will be. the Cal Cup, uh, races will be, uh, October thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, uh, three days of racing action. Yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Committee had their meeting. The state continues to, uh, have funding for shelters and programs and the committee continues to search for locations and partners, uh, to be able to develop a program, uh, to help the homelessness of Kings County. Corcoran has, um, has a house, I guess, in providing service, um, and that was reported. And so they are moving some of the folks around. I think there's seventy people in the program now and there's over a hundred on a waiting list, so there is, there is some demand. With that, that concludes, uh, my, uh, Mrs. Martinez, would you like to talk about board correspondence, upcoming events, and future agenda items?
Yes, your board, for board correspondence, your board received a memo dated September sixteenth from LaFco regarding the annexation of Seven Islands to the City of Hamford. For upcoming events, we have the Tenth Annual Light of Hope Cocktail Event will take place on Saturday, September twenty-fourth at five thirty PM at the Hamford Civic Center. Attendees will hear from advocates about CASA of Kings County. Tickets are seventy-five per person. The Kings County Special Olympics will be having their chili cook-off on Saturday, September twenty-fourth at the Hamford Civic Park. Vendors and teams are needed, so please email kingscountiespecialolympicsalltogether@gmail.com for details. Sarah Mooney Museum will be holding a Legends of Lamoore Cemetery Walk on Saturday, September twenty-fourth at nine AM and ten thirty AM at the Lamoore Cemetery. Tickets are twenty dollars. There will be a King and Queen of California and Michi Festival on September twenty, uh, twenty-fourth at the Lamoore Rec Center. Doors open at eleven AM. The King and Queen of California is the biggest single cornhole tournament in California. Every year this draws the best cornhole players from around the state. General admission tickets are ten dollars and they will be seventeen at the gate. There will be a Kings County Public Safety Event on Thursday, October sixth, from five to seven PM at Kettlemann City Park. This free, this is a free family event for the Kettlemann City community to learn about the different services Kings County offers. There will be a free barbecue, free flu shots and much more. The Hamford Harvest Fest will take place on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two from two to nine at the Hamford Mall. There are only, the tickets are ten dollars per person and will include free pony rides, face paint, scavenger hunts, and discount at the pumpkin patch. There will be a paint night at the Kings Art Center located in downtown Hamford on October nineteenth. Tickets are thirty dollars and you must RSVP through Eventbrite. Host, Halloween costumes are encouraged. Also, the Battle of the Badges will be held November seventh, eighth, ninth. This is a three-day event. The link will be sent out to, um, the county employees and the public today. For upcoming agenda items for next week, we have one from admin. The first reading of the ordinance for Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Ag has one item for an MOU with Tulare County for their pesticides disposal event. Behavioral Health has two items regarding their MHA's Plan Annual Update. County Council has one item for consideration regarding the appointment of trustees for the Cross Creek Flood Control District. Health has an update on the COVID nineteen update. Human Resource is going to bring a new policy regarding lactation accommodations for the workplace. And JTO has an item for a closeout for a grant. That is all.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding, uh, upcoming events? I think the only thing is I think the chili, chili, uh, contest has been canceled.
That's what I was wondering if it's been canceled. Okay.
I think it's been canceled, so, yeah, and I'm not sure it'll come back. I'm not sure what the problem was, but I think that part has been canceled. With that, um, we do have one item and, under closed session, a workers' comp, um, case. The pending litigation has been pulled and will return at a future, um, date. With that, um, that concludes all of the action on today's meeting. I want to bring your attention, San Joaquin Valley Regional, um, meeting on, uh, from September twenty-eighth to the thirtieth and the city-county coordinating meeting is October third. With that, uh, we will now, the board will move into closed, uh, closed session to take up one item and then, uh, jurn out of closed session and our next regular scheduled meeting is September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. With that, thank you very much.